Uh that will give us a way of uh fully integrating our diaspora community into our governance system. Uh moving further, I want us to also understand that uh members in diaspora are we need to have a policy, we need to establish uh a platform in terms of what and what do we want in faces, what can we benefit through health services? What can we benefit through education? What can benefit through science acting and technology? Uh in so doing, you can say, okay, exchange program for uh universities in the three geopolitical, in three or six geopolitical zones. We identify these universities, but it's by the program and then those in diaspora can uh come in with uh academics, researchers who can also help in that area. And uh when you are doing that, nobody will say, oh, this uh foreign citizens are coming to harass us. No, they are coming with a project that is recognized by the government. Uh that is one aspect in terms of education, where identify areas of our needs, especially in in our sciences. And we give them a process and a platform to develop how they can relate with uh universities. Uh can start from a geopolitical zone or two geopolitical zones, we have six geopolitical zones. And that will be concretized. Uh if if we serve as if uh this uh what the program we have, the technical aid called Nigeria was uh is involved. Now, instead of us sending people out, our own brothers and sisters who are away are now coming with what they have acquired there to uh give us knowledge. That is the principle behind that one. And it's equally extended to the uh uh education feed. Uh in the sense that uh in the I mean, uh health services, uh we see what you have been doing. Coming home for a month or two, doing series of medical outreachers. This could be formalized, this could be formalized and the government will have a role to play in terms of providing the basic logistics and also ensuring adequate security architecture and others are kind of finances. And in this case, there's no question of uh any kind of tariff for whatever is coming in under these uh projects. That's the education, I mean uh medical uh services which hospitals could be identified and services will be rendered periodically and that of uh really appreciating our threats in diaspora and the government too, also thinking of uh uh knowing that, yes, their movement outside of this country is now yielding fruits, yielding results. I still want us to look at the question of diasporans uh leading in economic growth and development in the private sector. Uh we see the revolution going on in China. Uh small, small businesses are getting encouraged in exports. Uh we have challenge of our energy in Nigeria. And our people in diaspora can come with technology that will boost either solar energy, wind energy and so on, which could be unique to Nigeria. And the to build trust in this is that the government policies will favor what they are doing. It will back up with government support, government uh at the federal level. There'll be a development plan for diaspora activities and that will cover what the private sector can also partner with those in diaspora and it will be uh implemented successfully because there is a government backing and they are not just wandering in the wilderness, but come with uh their ideas that fit in into our development uh plan. And uh again, uh we go on uh medical tourism, we go on spiritual tourism. I think uh those our uh our colleagues and brethren who are in diaspora can arrange uh tours of some specific places for industrialists and government officials. We plan it maybe twice in a year. Say, okay, uh those in this area of uh technology in Nigeria, come and visit what we have in Europe or in country A B C. Arrange this and government will uh we support it at a subsidized rate and our industrialists will visit and see what is happening there. And uh not just visiting, there will be a basis for collaboration. So whatever is seen there, you'll see how we can uh replicate it to suit our own level of development ambition in Nigeria. I think that will build trust in the activities of the diasporan and I would also give more respect to our citizens. And I want us to also know that uh to build trust in business and investment uh requires some basic ethical practices. And uh with due respect to our fellow citizens, no Nigerians at home in particular. We like to cut corners, we like to, we like to violate rules. So in the process of this, it it's most, it has affected international collaboration and partnership and so on over the years. And so the with our own members in diaspora should also have a way of promoting ethical practices in our uh private sector and public sector in Nigeria. By educating people on what and what is expected if you come to China, this is what should be done. If you are in England, this is what should be done. If you're in Canada, these are your expectations. So that there are people who understand the ethical practice and when we are coming, these are our expectations. If we adhere to this principle, I want to believe that uh the question of violation, the question of uh uh patent rights, the question of copyrights and so on will be adequately
addressed.
Uh taken care of. Uh because business in digital era goes with integrity.
Absolutely.
And uh when we work with integrity, we attract more investors.
Hmm.
And this will build trust. Uh it is also a thing of concern that uh when there is no continuity in governance, it will affect these level projects. That is why this should be, a law should be established to protect the activities of uh our citizens in diaspora, so that the diaspora community will be protected by law. If gov- if the government of the day is no longer there, the new government will know that this is happening. So this question of trust cannot be uh threatened. And I want us to also understand that uh when we talk of this uh collaboration, promoting business and investment uh with uh a trust building capacity. It's also very important for us to identify and uh accept that investors uh in the actual sense uh governed by their investments. So you can't come and then you make a law that is hostile to whatever they are bringing in or whatever they are doing with the private sector. So there should be a kind of, it's not holiday, but a policy that uh projects, investment coming to the diaspora community should be maybe zero tax free.
Yes.
And then access to uh land, access to government approval and patologies should be at no bottleneck bureaucracy. So when we do this, we discover that uh people will be free, people will be happy to come home. But uh when this is not done, people will prefer to invest outside Nigeria because the atmosphere here is not friendly and uh and it will breed on on I mean uh unworthy outcome. So if this is done, we can now uh have quality representatives who will come with brilliant uh ideas. Our climate uh is not toxic, but is the implement tools that may go toxic. And in that case, what do we do? We talk of risk assessment and management that we not put the diaspora community in a bad position. How do we do this? Uh one, there should be a special insurance policy. Not necessarily any, not necessarily a special insurance company, but existing insurance companies can have a special policy that will protect their investment in the country. A situation where we battle with insecurity, even within Nigeria, people are afraid to invest in some places. So if there is a an insurance policy that will protect whatever they are bringing in, I think that trust will be there. They can come and even sleep with the two eyes while the work is uh going on. And you can't talk of insurance without talking of internal security. Uh we may not know, but it is a fact that we have well-trained police in Nigeria. They are well-trained. It's just the ruling class or the political class is not giving them the environment to display their professionalism. So in this case, there should be not community policing now, but police units who will also be uh given special training to protect the lives and properties of our diaspora community. Uh so the question of being kidnapped, the question of uh terrorists going to break down, burn down uh their uh investment will be met with stiff opposition. Have to create a very good uh atmosphere and this means uh sending some of our policemen to also travel to some of these countries to refresh and know what is expected in this era of uh
Professor, I'm not ready to interrupt you, but I would just beg you to uh probably look at the time and see if you can, if you can gradually summarize your points, sir.
Okay, sorry, I was not given a time limit.
Yes, I know. It was, it was a mistake, yes.
Yeah, it's not, it's part of uh our development. So eh to really random, I think we must make conscious effort to in to understand that uh the uh uh community in diaspora are members and citizens of this country and they have critical role to play. We must do that in every policy we make. And lastly, when we are appointing members of boards, advisory committees and so on, especially in a foreign but related agencies, they should be represented so that it will be a proper ambassador of the country. I want to thank you, the organizers and all the participants. We cannot finish this with, it's an ongoing discussion and I believe at the end of the day, we will get to write this thing. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Prof. Thank you so much. In fact, Prof, um that reminds me of my university days in Calabar. And then I, you know, we, if we don't, you know, chip in, we just get carried away because um you're chipping out all the most important points that we've been talking over the years in the diaspora. Yes, you, you mentioned, you emphasize the need for diaspora representation in Nigerian government, which is very, very key. In fact, you summarized that the Nigerians in diaspora are good ambassadors of the country, especially in economic and foreign areas. And then you did not see the reason why we should not have a permanent seat, uh which is a very, very quiet, you know, um things that we've been fighting for in the diaspora. You also emphasize the need, you know, to create an insurance policy that protects diaspora's investment so that it will be encouraged, you know, to come, to come on board. And you also emphasize the need, you know, for government to make a deliberate, deliberate policy, you know, to leave a certain seat for the diaspora so that we can have a maximum impact in both political and economic aspect of this country. Thank you so much, Prof. Professor, uh major at the, I say PhD, political economy and development studies. He's a professor of governance, uh identity politics and development, communication from University of Just Nigeria. Thank you, Prof, for having you. It's been a very pleasure to listen to you. And then we hope that the organizers will be able to make it available. I see that they have actually included the AI summary and you'll be able to send us the summary of your, of your presentation so that we can share it also with members of this, of this, you know, community that participated. Thank you so much, Prof. We appreciate you. Okay, so we'll be calling our next speaker, eh it's no other person than also Dr. Adiola Adeleye Fashuba. Please pardon me if I'm not, if I'm, I didn't get it right. She's the Director General, AKT Diaspora Relation and State Diaspora Focal Person in AKT State. Um we'll be listening to her as a matter of fact, eh that's our anchors in different states. Eh for those of us who do not know what the focal point person is, eh are, they are responsible for, you know, coordinating eh the, the, the program of need to come at federal level, but at the state level. And so they are very, very, very important because they are the grassroots, they are the immediate contact of the diasporans, eh you know, to their various states. So we'll be listening to her and then, you know, to get to know one or two things, um not only from the, the desire of eh the AKT State Diaspora um initiative, but also how eh this project and every other project can help us in general. So Dr. Adiola Adeleye, please, you have the microphone.
Evening, Mr. Moderator. Lovely to see you. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely, loud and clear.
My voice is a bit husky, so please bear with me today.
It's okay, madam. In fact, they are looking at tonne flizzy soup out today. I can see very clearly. Thank you so much for a grace, nursing a beautiful African attire.
Yes, I um I decided a while ago to portray my African-ness. And then I got disappointment and it was just the icing on the cake. So I think for the past few years, you wouldn't see me without being in a native attire. Uh so uh and I find that our people are getting more interested in showing who they are, appreciating who they are and showing our African-ness. So yes, um the, this topic tonight is quite interesting. When I was asked to speak, I was like, oh, wow, uh where do we start from? I I've looked up vet and pay and I think it's a very wonderful innovation because most of the problems that diasporans have is an issue of trust. Usually with finances, sending money home for them to build for you, for them to do various things and then the money is siphoned away or or is mismanaged. And our people are, are not happy about so many of these things. There's so many complaints from people uh going home thinking they're going to meet a huge house. And they get there, they find they've been sending them photographs of somebody else's property. So with with this kind of innovation, you'll know where your money is going to, you'll know that it's been useful what you intend they did for in the first place. And uh you know, uh uh there was a quotation I was looking at, we can distrust and look the other way um by Mr. Clinton, the previous um president of the United States. So we have to establish solutions to remove barriers that have been created by various things and reasons for various reasons. So why is there a distrust between diasporans and the people back home? I think we need to establish that. That's the number one thing to address. And we've said that, okay, we find that money gets sent home, they're not useful what uh they said they won't use them for. For example, I remember a church um saying that if you, if you give money, for example, to uh buying a piano and if the piano has been bought by somebody else, they'll return your money to you. So now that, okay, money was sent to buy a piano and because the piano been bought by somebody else, you go ahead and buy uh drums. That wasn't what the money was intended for. If you ask the person that sent the money to say, okay, the piano has been bought, would you want us to buy drums? I'm sure they will say yes, but they would have asked in the first place and the person will feel comfortable with that, that that's what the money was intended for. So at times, our people back home do not see anything wrong in this. I was like, well, yes, it's, it's used to buy drums, drums were needed also, so why not? So I think establishing that trust, bridging the gap of understanding. Because if you look at both sides, they're both okay to an extent. The person that bought drums didn't mean any evil, he didn't put the money in his pocket, he still bought something for the church. But we need to establish the understanding that, no, if I ask for A, it is A I want, not B. Even if B is acceptable, but that doesn't mean it's okay. So that that's the first barrier to bridge. So but diasporans are ordinarily very wary of things to do with finances at all times. So I would ask that our people going back home, you want to buy something, you want to do something, you've got to do your due diligence. That's a factor to put in. So you shouldn't rely on just somebody saying something or just seeing an advert that looks lovely or they're selling land somewhere for five hundred K, it looks attractive. You have to do your due diligence, you need to send somebody there. You need to establish the fact that it's a type of land you want. Because there's some land that might be okay, but they may need to be sand filled. But i- if you've not established that, that you've got to factor in the cost of sand filling also, then you've not gotten value for money. So due diligence is very important. Um there might be statutory requirements for your buying things. Essentially, let's look at real estate because I find that this is what diasporans are really into. Most people just want to go back home and and build after staying for so many years in the diaspora. They want to go back home and have a property of of their own. So you need to make sure that all the statutory requirements and approvals that you need, agreements are in place. Um the, the codes, the regulatory, regulatory codes are are appropriate for what you want to do. You make sure there's an arbitration clause in place, even with the contractors that you might have asked to build for you. Because litigation takes so long, you may not be able to go through ten years, fifteen years going to through paying lawyers. But if you have a, an appropriate arbitration clause in place, then it will make things faster because arbitration is enforceable and it doesn't take that long. Usually it's meant to be twenty, a big turnover. So ensure that you have an appropriate arbitration clause in place. Um the location matters, you know, I've mentioned having to sand fill, maybe it's waterlogged. You went there to check when it was dry, uh dry season, not factoring in that the rainy season will come. The kind of title you're going to go for, whether you see a vote, I evolve, approval of the governor or consent, things like that. So you need to ensure competence of contractors also. I was watching a video the other day and a man was touching a row of building blocks that had been made. And at each touch, the blocks were just collapsing and withering away. So you can imagine if those have been used to build a house. There's so many cases of collapsed buildings because proper regulations hadn't been factored in. Things hadn't been looked in properly, the, the amounts and consistency of the cement that had to be there as against the sand. So these are all things to look into when you are investing back home. Business-wise, it could be farming, uh what, what kind of soil, the type of soil in the location you've chosen. There's some places where Ogu will grow very well, beautifully. But there's some other areas that it wouldn't thrive as, as required. There's some areas that you can have cassava, some areas you will not, some areas it's ground knocked. So you need to make sure that the land you are buying for farming is appropriate for what you want to plant. So just don't get sold anything. And I hope that with vet and pay, all this, I, I know there'll be other things will factor in with time. So I'm sure they're taking bits back from today, that even when they're ensuring that there's trust and payment, that they might bring in areas where people will pay um for services so they can vet um land for them, vet stuff for them. Because it's not easy to just get on the plane and fly to Nigeria. But you want someone trustworthy to look into things for you and at times, family may not be enough. So um looking at bad guarantees when you, you're paying money, you may need to look into that area also. You know, strategies for mitigating payments because of exposure um to, of exposure of depositors' funds. It, it's very important. So you need to look into all these areas. With AKT State, for example, I know, uh Honorable Beam says, yeah, she's selling AKT. Yes, I sell AKT wherever I go. AKT has, has gone far. There, when the, the prof was speaking earlier, I was just thinking, oh, we're doing all this in AKT, you know. In AKT, we have um the Agro Island Michelle's. So uh we'll look after uh farms. So in the area of security, AKT is quite secure. You, you may hear all kinds of stuff, but AKT is secure. The uh the Director General for Homeland Security, Dr. Dottarid Tiberu is constantly on the go, working. Even without people even knowing he's the one, that we have um the people in charge of security itself. So AKT, as I would say, we, we are business friendly. We, we are, we have tax benefits for people that want to invest. We have pioneer status incentives, relief even for investors, you know, um local raw materials utilization, uh trainings of all kinds. So when, when you invest in AKT, there's so much um that is available to you that you're given, even land, the people that are giving land for free, they're going to be planting crops that are viable, that are uh the kind of crops required. So there's so much help in that. Um the even reinvestment of allowances, um the tax allowance also can be invested, reinvested again. So there's so much with AKT that, that we do for people that get involved in coming to invest in our, in the AKT farming sector. And there are other areas also, the manufacturers can benefit. Um I don't know whether people know that we have the Kondere Farms, um Promised Doll. So we, 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 we have a farm where milk is produced and then put out to the Nigerian um uh populace. So definitely, when you, you're talking about building trust, this is something AKT has done so much with. A slogan is shared prosperity because no one is to be left behind. The Governor of Yodhun Abiyemi Yubangi Administration ensures that, is ensuring that working two-four-seven, that no one is left behind, every area is covered. And if a little loophole should pop up, there's work on it straight away to ensure that there's no room for anyone to complain about things not being done properly or things not being right. Um recently, we had the da- dashboard inaugurated where all the government's projects can be monitored. So from here, anyone can just go ahead and just click onto the dashboard and say, okay, what is happening in our AKT? What is happening in Jero AKT at this point in time? What um the project is on? What level has the project gotten to? What is, what has been spent? What are the expectations? So for AKT on its own, I, I think we're doing very well, even though, though I say so myself. And with the diaspora project, AKT has been the, the, the role model. We actually won the, I, I don't know how long I've got, I hope I'm still in time.
Yes, you have, you have three, three more minutes, ma.
I've got three, okay. Yes, we, we, we won the um diaspora agency, the government diaspora agency of, of the year last year and I'm sure we're going to win it again this year. And yeah, so we, we're seen as the, the role models amongst um the Committee of Diaspora and uh Focal Point Officers. the committee of diaspora and uh focal point offices, will I really that way? Uh, and I think a lot of other states are emulating what what we are doing. You know, having a diaspora and in the diaspora office to ensure that one can understand and relate with our people, having been a diaspora and for so many years. And I find that I I think so many other states now, uh um getting diasporants into that office so that they can relate with the people appropriately and understand what our people are doing. With the diaspora office, what we've we've also initiated is that whatever you want done in Nigeria, you can get it done through us, we will help you. So you want to get your CFO, for example, you want to uh pay your tenement rate. You want to send a hamper, for example, to someone in your village or your grandma or something. You know, things that you may not have someone to do for you, but they're just support our diaspora and so that things that that can be at peace. And because when they are at peace, they can look back at doing things at home, they'll be happy to come back home and invest and establish things, because they know that nobody would hoodwink them, we are watching out for them. So we we support all our diasporans, whatever venture they want to do. And that's uh what the diaspora office has been doing in the past few months, uh well, just over a year now. So I think um that's about three minutes, am I good?
Very, very well. But I wish I, I wish I could sit down and listen. Um, again, um, you talked about trust issue. And then um immediately came to mind, eh during our time in Nido, we were able to have an MOU with the ICPC, eh that was about over four, five years ago. And to make sure that the diaspora investors' investment are guaranteed. And I think the first speaker also mentioned that. And so like you say, yeah, trust issue is a very, very big issue in the diaspora. And then you also, um, you know, hammered on a very, very important topic, that is due diligence. And yes, you can pay land, you can pay money for the land, is the land locked field, is this hand field, we need to fill it up. It's very, very, you know, important, important, uh you know, uh point to consider. Then, of course, you also drew our attention that for most diaspora, I think real estate seems to be the, you know, the the most important, if not one of the most important, if not the most important, you know, investment alternatives uh in in Nigeria. You mentioned arbitration, which is very, very important. That in spite of also having trust in all this system, the arbitration is very, very important. So that we should be able to, you know, get get justice when there's a need for that. And then lastly, eh I think it's not also out of place. Um, I think I can also confirm that at A K T State Diaspora, a focal person, a focal point or focal, eh you know, station has been doing some very, very, you know, fantastic job, congratulations on that. And we are looking forward and hoping that so many states will also take up a, you know, a leap from the A K T State Diaspora eh issue. So madam, please keep doing the great things. And again, like I said, I hope the 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 organizers are going to make sure that this well-articulated point you've been able to rule out from us, and will be able to make available for us and to review that. In fact, honestly speaking, I think this program is not enough for us to have you inform us more about what you do in A K T, because we need more of such a, such a, you know, um, eh eh motivating, eh you know, insight, how how the system works. And I think lastly, you mentioned, you know, that um the most of this, these issues has been taken care of or partly taken care of in the in the in the diaspora, eh helping the diaspora, eh you know, to take care of that. So basically, you are you are reemphasizing the need to for vets and pay, you know, eh things that can be done digitally without us being eh being there on the ground. Thank you very much, eh so much, man, for these incited, eh you know, eh eh lectures you've given us, because this is more than a remark. And we hope to have you back again to do that, thank you so much.
Very much, thank you, appreciate you.
So we'll go straight to our next speaker, eh Professor Akban Iqbo. I hope eh you are around, I hope you are on 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 set. We actually called you before, but unfortunately you've not eh joined us. Oh, fantastic, fantastic. And so Professor Akban H Iqbo is an, an, eh has a PhD in economics eh and also a business administration, professor of economics and public policy. Eh sir, it's our very, very big pleasure eh to have you here with us, and the microphone is yours as well, listen to you, sir.
Thank you very much, and I'm sorry to join late, I had a meeting. Uh, I've sent my PowerPoint and the main paper to on the calendar uh for distribution. So I have an outline where I have, I will start with an introduction. And then I will follow with understanding the trust deficit and why trust matters. Now, look at the new approach to trust building, and I will draw examples of progress and models. Uh, what uh looking at, regardless of legal states, and then I will conclude. Uh, you know that the, well, to be honest, the Nigerian economy has had the last few years, uh the macroeconomic fundamentals have not moved the right uh 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 direction in terms of inflation, uh unemployment, interest rate, and so on and so forth. But this topic is very crucial for our colleagues in the diaspora. Uh, so the 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 issue of trust is very, very important, and I'm glad that all the speakers have admitted to that. So uh, and we know that in trust, relationship matters, okay? It 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 matters, I will build a relationship over time. Uh, and trust has a lot of impact on macro uh and micro variables uh in the economy. Now, the issue of trust is even much more crucial when we are dealing with those in the, the in the diaspora, since they are far away. And so trust becomes very crucial. And so, as I said, we will look at the so-called new approach and the process uh over time. Now, in terms of understanding the trust deficit, in other words, in my perception, there is some trust deficit. Even within Nigeria, not talk about those in the in the in the in the diaspora. That has to do with the legacies of governance. Uh, the the governance structure has been such that it has a, it has a uh uh created mistrust among uh uh those within the country and those in the diaspora. Why has that happened? That's because of law of policy, inconsistencies, and reversals, uh weak legal and judicial systems, uh endemic uh corruption, bureaucratic bottlenecks, information asymmetry, and lack of transparency, and security and political instability. And of course, this has resulted in diaspora mistrust. And they all have various experiences, as the last speaker mentioned. Why trust matters? Trust matters because it serves as a foundational element of all economic systems, trust. It allows for economic efficiency and it reduces transaction costs. It attracts and retains investments. It strengthens public-private collaboration, okay? It enhances diaspora engagement, that's why trust matters. It helps in promoting innovation and entrepreneurship. It strengthens social cohesion and national identity. And of course, it leads to boosting international reputation. Because those in diaspora, if trust has an impact, it will allow other cities from other countries, okay, to want to understand Nigeria and want to invest in Nigeria. Something I call it, so-called new approach, restoring trust in Nigeria's business and investment environment necessitates comprehensive reforms rather than superficial changes or mere promises. It requires a fundamental transformation of institutional operations, business engagements, and citizens participation. The new approach entails an effective method, an effective approach, to be grounded in intentionality, transparency, inclusivity, and accountability. These principles should inform both policy development and routine business practices, regulatory engagements, and the provision of public services. The new approach will include what I call institutional reengineering. A lot of institutions are having big problems, they are weak, we need to reengineer them uh to be of some standard, at a global standard. Then, there's a need for policy consistency and stakeholder engagements. And this also involves technical engagement for the sake of transparency. We have to strengthen our legal and legal and dispute resolution mechanisms. In other words, if there are disagreements between those in the diaspora and those in Nigeria, there must be a way to settle those uh disputes. And it must be reliable. Public accountability and open governance is crucial. And then the diaspora engagement platforms. The diaspora have several engagement platforms which we have to key into and be part of it. And more important also, civic education and culture of integrity. Now, what are some of the examples of progress we made so far? As you all know, we have the Presidential Enabling Business Environment Council, the P E B E C. It is championing uh 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 building this trust and trying to encourage this diaspora, the part and parcel of Nigeria's development. In terms of the subnational government, legal state is a good example of a subnational governance model to follow. And that's why they are attracting a lot of investments from from the diaspora, from those in the diaspora. And as you are aware, you can, there's the Nigerian Nigerian Subid Investment Authority, which as well as can key into. There's, of course, the fintech and digital financial services. Good, uh, then we have the Open Treasury Porter, the Open Treasury Porter and BUDS, uh which was is a good example of what diasporans can key into. And of course, the, let me say popular, but I don't know politics now, the diaspora bonds and other investment platforms. Last time we checked, the diaspora bond that was visited the time of Ngozi Wela attracted millions, millions of billions of dollars into the economy. And I think Nigeria is one of the countries that have the highest riches uh among African countries. Then the, I mentioned this earlier, the alternative dispute resolution centers have been created, for example, in Lagos. So these are some of the examples of the progress made when it comes to the the uh the the imperative of building trust in Nigerian uh uh economy uh among the Nigerians and those in in the diaspora. Uh, as I said, the main papers have been sent where this are further elaborated. But in conclusion, let me say that in the changing dynamics of global commerce, governance, and innovations, it is evident that trust has become imperative in the business and investment nexus in any country, in any economy. Trust cannot, unlike manufactured, trust cannot be manufactured, mandated, or acquired through borrowing. Okay, it requires earning, requires investment, and careful preservation. In Nigeria, a country rich in human and material resources, establishment and maintenance of trust is not merely a moral obligation, in my view, it is a strategic requirement. Transparency establishes this belief. Consistent actions reinforces it, and inclusive engagement sustains it. Trust is fostered through clear processes, accountable leadership, and transparent outcomes. The trust of Nigerians in diaspora community is invaluable and influential. These individuals can serve as both remitters of capital and custodians of Nigeria's international reputation. Their belief or absence of it can significantly influence opportunities for future generations. It is essential to establish improved mechanisms that facilitate safe investment, meaningful contributions, and consistent engagement with development agenda of your homeland as Nigeria. Nigeria, as we all know, is at a crucial juncture, in my own percep- in my own perception. Nigeria can continue to operate in cycles of broken promises and eroded confidence, or we can chart a new course, one that is anchored in openness, driven by innovation, and sustained by trust. The necessity of establishing trust within the Nigerian business and investment environment is evident and pressing. Trust is essential to the full realization of our potentials. Trust can enable Nigeria to achieve significant growth, leverage the potential of its diaspora, and emerge as a leader in innovation and prosperity within Africa and beyond. A good example is the trust that Indians have placed in their diaspora. And the diaspora, the Indian in diaspora have done a lot for the growth and development of India. Today, India is rated as one of the emerging, uh, uh, I would say highly emerging uh economists. Because diaspora have invested in in India, and that, the investment has led to uh enhanced human capital development in India. And you can see those of Indian or Indian descent all over the world now. I thank you for your attention, thank you.
Wow, wow, thank, Doc, Prof, that is um, that is um economics five oh five, if there's anything like that. I mean, eh eh the, you basically expanded the issue of trust. That trust has a very direct impact to economic, micro and ma- micro and macroeconomics, eh you know, development of Nigeria. You hammer the the point, the fact that we have currently a trust deficit eh as a result of, you know, the legacy of bad governments in Nigeria. Eh, you also mentioned that the issue of trust deficit also has has to do with policy inconsistency we have in Nigeria. And then um by and large, there's a collaboration within in economic development and and trust. And so you are, you know, encouraging that the trust has to, you know, be rebuilt eh through policy reengineering. You know, but you also make mention that the diaspora can also take advantage of new government initiative on trust building. Eh use Legos as an example, and you give also other, you know, instrument like the dispute resolution, public accountability, and so on and so forth, that the diaspora can use as an instrument, you know, to mitigate whatever, you know, trust deficient we have, and seriously how they can build on that. I will basically beg these organizers of these event that they need to put eh the diaspora focal persons and then, you know, these very wonderful eh um insights we are having, you know, not only on complaining about the issue of eh eh diaspora not having enough representation and business, but also to take advantage of, you know, what we already have in existence. And I hope that the organizers will make your your paper available, which I'm very sure that most diaspora would like to actually make reference to and basically come back to you. Thank you so much, Prof, for that very, very insightful eh mini lecture, so to say. And so I'm moving very fast, um, I will call on, eh at this point, I will call on Dr. eh Kenneth, my namesake, Ibe, eh who is eh behind eh this eh good, great initiative. And so at least you have had all the very wonderful presentation from our great speakers. And let's see exactly if eh the vet and pay, eh as you envisage it, you know, take those things into consideration, or at least eh address those issues eh that they've actually raised as um both the positive and the negative side on how we can, you know, have a diaspora engagement in both political and economic. So eh Dr. Ken Ibe, I hear the microphone, you can address us now, please.
Okay, thank you very much, and um may I quickly join uh the host and the chief host to welcome every participant to this meeting? I want to thank um the speaker so far, um Professor Ezekiel Demolad Major, thank you very much. Um, I also want to thank Professor Akban Iqbo for this uh decisive lecture. I I think we are going to have this lecture published on the national newspapers so that uh the Guadalai Nigerians can uh gain from it and that all the issues, we're gonna articulate them and have them published. I will also expect that resolutions will also be reached in this meeting, and like you said, this is not the first, this is not the last. We're gonna have several additions until we get more people interested in. We're going to have several additions until we get more people interested in, uh, these discussions because there are discussions that will shape the destiny of Nigeria and indeed, uh, beyond Nigeria. So I want to thank everyone of you that are here. And, um, now I have the privilege to, uh, make my own, uh, presentation, you know? The idea for hosting this meeting, um, is very novel. I, I want to thank titles to the Chair of Africa, of the Nigerian Diaspora Organization, Bandi, well done for a super job you are doing. Um, no doubt, we, we want to see you in the Senate very soon because you've had a lot of experience and you bring that to bear in the overall, uh, lawmaking process in Nigeria. Thank you very much for all the labor you labeled in the diaspora and Nigeria. I know all the time, uh, you spend so much time to make the diaspora, diaspora day possible. And also your, 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 your contribution to the establishment of a need corp. Well done with all your credit, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I just have a brief introduction of, um, what I want to say about trust. And, um, I'm going to take an example from the Bible. And that's going to be, to be comparing both developing and developed countries. We're going to compare a story or a case study in Luke chapter sixteen, verse one to thirteen, the parable of the unjust or pertinent steward. And if you read that parable, uh, it tells us of a man who has a company and, uh, a day came for accountability. And, uh, after taking stock, uh, he realized that, um, the steward needs to be fired. And he needs to fire the steward for what I call mismanagement. At that point, there was no misappropriation, there was no fraud yet. But somehow, the servant got wind of the fact that it's about to be laid off. And then he, he now did something very smart. He quickly called up all creditors that were, or debtors that were, are owing the company and said, look, in case my master gets to you, if you are owing one bidon, please tell him it's five hundred thousand. And then he called all of them, you know, and reduced certain percentage of what they are owing so that he could have somebody to bring him into their own business later. You know, that was a smart move to secure himself. You know, he's, uh, he wants to secure himself. So that's where I brought that story from. And when you look at that, he actually committed that fraud originally. At last, because he wanted to secure himself, it was about losing his job. All right, um, what do we learn from that? When the master invited, or the master also knew what he did. And then called him and said, my friend, I learned of, uh, the moves you made, they are smart moves. Uh, the Bible said that it commended him for being smart. Uh, but that was not, um, it, what do you call it, a clean bill? For example, you know, it didn't say that I didn't commit a crime, but it said, look, you are so smart. You wanted to secure yourself for the future. So what does this teach us? There are issues for determination here. Number one, the servant's appointment, like I said, were to be terminated, terminated probably due to mismanagement. Number two, he got a tip off and then he became smart. And then he actually committed a fraud to secure himself. Number three, his master commended him upon the discovery of this smart move that the servant may have learnt dishonesty maybe from the master. And then if you look at this story, I want to bring it to the issue of trust in Nigeria or both, uh, developing and, um, developed country. My submission here is that it's honesty, you know, which leads to lack of trust is situational. Now, why is this situational? I'll be looking at it from three perspectives. Number one, high level of poverty has made so many citizens of developing countries, especially in Nigeria, dishonest when you do business with them. Because they are poor and they want to be smart, they want to take any advantage or take undue advantage of anyone they do business with. If you go to, uh, uh, markets now, you're, okay, let me use a spare five dealer as, as an example. They pull a lot of smart moves. When you go to their shop, they tell you, uh, this is, this part is, uh, Japan, this part is China and this one is Korea. And then they advise you to either buy Japan or Korea. And when you pay for Japan, they give you Korea. If you pay for, uh, Korea, you get China. So there are so many issues in this nation that needs to be addressed. And that is really going on as, uh, uh, you know, because of the level of poverty Nigeria finds themselves. And again, who should be blamed? The government has the biggest bite of blame in this situation because, uh, we all already know the kind of leadership we have. We already know there are a lot of dishonest leaders. Where, you know, we already know that you wake up one morning and they tell you snake has swallowed a five billion era and all of that. So the people see it, the poor people see it. And when they have opportunity of interacting with Nigerians in diaspora, all the Nigerians resident in Nigeria, they want to milk you, they want to make the best deal as much as they can make without bothering, uh, whether you survive or your business survive or not, without bothering your feelings. So the government should be held highly responsible. The next thing I'll talk about is insecurity. If you go to the civil service, for example, now we have minimum wage at seventeen era. I don't know how much, uh, eighty thousand, right? Uh, seventy thousand. Now you see a director may not even earn up to four hundred thousand. That's not a living wage, right? Seventy thousand is not a living wage. How are they going to make up for all their daily needs? The children need to go to school, even if they are going to public school. They, you know, they need to buy, uh, material transportation, you know, fuel if they have cars, rent it, feed it. So how would you tell me that seventeen era can take care of the needs of a man who is even single? So this also, for them to be able to secure themselves, they are ready to sell the nation, they are ready to, uh, what do you call it, aid contractors to milk the Nigerian nation, even foreigners, because they want to make a bit out of it. So this had a real situation that has, what do you call it, uh, promoted trust issues in Nigeria and in these most developing countries. Another issue I look at here is the low ethical values. Now, what are we doing in our homes now, the family unit? What are we doing? Most, uh, parents don't even have time to talk with their children, to, uh, teach them both religious and moral lessons. They don't have the time anymore. Some, uh, children are, are in the body school and the parents are busy junketing across the world. What time do we have to tell them stories, why, uh, honesty is important? Uh, the Bible said that a good name is better than silver and gold. Now, so that's why you see multiplication of, um, Yahoo boys, four one nine boys everywhere. When you see these boys, I recently went to Onicha, somewhere in Oghidi, and I, I, I was in a hotel. And I, I was embarrassed because throughout the night, no ma-, no one could sleep. Young boys between fifteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, twenty. They are busy drinking and then throwing party at the poolside. Obviously, looking at them, you know, they are all Yahoo boys. And this thing is becoming a source of national, what do you call it, worry? I don't know how much, uh, the nation is taking it, but for me, it bothers me so much. Um, I was talking with a friend in Lagos sometime and he told me that, um, he was invited to a workshop by the Danny Chambers. And, uh, the statistics before that they presented was that the money that's in the hand of Yahoo boys is bigger than the fund in the Nigerian Stock Exchange. So how do we address this situation? That is, uh, what do you call it, a discussion for another day. So ultimately, um, improvising solution to the trust deficit in Nigeria, um, and how to cure this malice, I think we need to devise various ideas. Why not neglecting any useful suggestion from this august body? I'm happy that the speakers that spoke before me, they've come up with a lot of suggestions that we need to look at as we go on. And then the ultimate solution, I believe, will involve government at all levels. The family units and then establishing systems. Now, what do I mean by system? If you look at the private, public-private partnership, I am a victim, serial victim of trust issues. Um, Kenneth, you realize that, uh, the, some of you in the diaspora, you are part of the project. In two thousand and eleven, I invested one million dollars in a public-private partnership with the Ministry of Defence and the Nigerian Legion. And not only that, we, we are, our, our contract, we are supposed to, uh, what do you call it, uh, produce the puppies, drive the unfortunate members, uh, objective to Nigerians and then use the puppy to generate funds for the retired or the veterans or the retired soldiers in Nigeria. That's what we call their puppy appear. And Ken, you are aware, we put in about almost more than a million dollars at that time, about three hundred eighty million, nine hundred and twenty eleven, if you convert it. And then we did conscious effort to ensure that we, we, we made a lot of collections in Europe, in the UK and some other part of the country, which Ken, you drove for us in eight countries in Europe. All we did, we were able to raise two, one hundred and seventy million within two weeks. And this is a program they never earn up to twenty million era from the Nigerian public. And we are to have the first two year contract. And then after that, it can be extended. Remember, they didn't put one dime. Did you know that as soon as they saw the one hundred and seventy million in the account in two weeks, they called me, they conspired against us and they gave us a letter terminating the one year that is left. We sold about two point one billion. But according to the agreement, they were expected, they were expected to set up a high powered presidential committee to go to all of the governors and recover this fund. They never did that. We were frustrated, we lost our funds. Again, they approached us in twenty, two thousand and sixteen, out of the law for country. We also took it up, put in two hundred and twenty million era again. It was terminated and then we gave up. So these are the issues. So the, the, the public service, they treat private companies as lepers. But they do not realize that it is the private companies that drives the economy. It is a private company that will, that will generate the employment Nigeria is seeking for. So there should be a serious platform, uh, which I, we're also trying to set up. Ken is aware, in the near future, we will set that up. Okay, currently, I'm, I'm in the court with the Ministry of Works. We developed the H D M I project that is, that will be earning government in the first phase of about eleven trillion. And they took it from us, even having two presidents approve it. The Ministry of Works converted it to theirs. We are in court since twenty, since twenty twenty. We, we had to, when, when they took it, we were prepared, we are in court. This is about the third year that we're in court and we're going to win that case. We're going to win that case. Ah ha, because when we win it, we are going to take a chunk of the money to establish a platform that will expose anyone, any Nigerian, any foreigner that, uh, uh, that, that, that puts up a proposal to the federal government. Anywhere that's stolen, we can catch them every time. So we promise that we are going to do that as soon as we win, uh, that case. And then please keep praying for us, uh, because it has to be won. A lot of people have suffered my own fate, that we cannot allow this to go. So these are the issues. These are the issues of trust. So now, my humble suggestion of what we are doing in vet and pay uh, is that we have decided to take a step, the bull by the horn, to set up a systemic solution, you know, uh, using vet and pay. I, I, I remember my friend, and I'm sure he's here. Hello, are you there?
Yes, we're here.
I'm sure, yes, thank you for, thank you for the slide. We're going to deal with that now. My friend, Kaya is here, Kaya online is here. And we were speaking about two weeks ago about this meeting. And he said to me, when he came to UK, um, he realized that nobody tells you what to do. Japan, nobody tells you what to do. Most of the developed countries, nobody tells you what to do. But there are countries you come to, you know, people will tell you what to do. He realized that the system conditions you, you know, to become responsible. So, and that is what vet and pay has been designed to do. The system will condition anyone you are doing business with, as long as you pass the business or the transaction through vet and pay, it will condition such persons to be responsible. And he has no problem with giving you trust because the system already has been made to demand trust before it can earn a fad in from you. So, and that's why we created vet and pay, uh, uh, the escrow application. What does it mean? Now, the escrow, like you can see on the screen, please, let's go to the next slide. Admin, next slide. All right, what the escrow does simply is to create trust, secure your transactions. You don't need to lose a dime until the value is delivered. So the simple steps to use vet and pay is that a buyer and seller, they agree on terms of, uh, transaction. Next slide. Now, the buyer submits payment to escrow. So you are the buyer, whatever I want to buy in Nigeria, you want to buy a trailer load of cement and you already have your architect in the site. You don't need to go through their architect. You just locate, uh, what do you call it, add a, a cement dealer in your location where you are building. And then you discuss the price of a trailer load of cement. And it's okay, fine, let's come to vet and pay. So when you come to vet and pay, you, uh, open an escrow for him. It's simple thing, very few fields. You put the, the email of, of, um, what do you call it, your contractor or your supplier. And then the name pops up so you can confirm it. And then you fill the amount you have agreed, then the terms of delivery. When am I releasing the money? If it's released to my site, and when it gets to my site, um, the receiver would, uh, what, take a photograph or a video that where he's receiving the trailer and then upload it. The, 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 what do you call it, the, 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 the supplier will upload that picture in his own dashboard. And when you see that has been received by the authorized person to receive it, you not do what? You, 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 you just press release. So that's how it works. So number three now, let's go. Number three now, seller delivers goods or services to buyer's location, anywhere he wants. Number four, then buyer approves goods or service. Number five, then vet and pay releases the payment to the seller. Now, you have, you, you, you are required when you are, uh, what do you call it, submitting this escrow to tell us the conditions or tell your customer as agreed the conditions for release. Now, what are the conditions? A full trailer load of nine hundred bags must arrive in my site. It has to be counted first. Number two, I wouldn't allow one bag of cement to be wasted. It must be complete and when, and it must be dangling, you know, depending on your agreement. So when it gets to site, the verifying officer, who is your, your staff, we verify them and then ensure it's correct. And then it, it, it captures the delivery documents, both of them receiving it. And then they upload it and you know that the deal is done. Then you authorize the payment and then the payment is paid to them minimum twenty four hours. And that settles it. So whatever you do on your dashboard, your supplier is also watching. Your service provider also has it on their dashboard. He will also accept these conditions as agreed before the escrow can be opened. So in this case, it can be applied to any kind of transaction, whether property purchase, whether you want to do, you want to purchase an auto, then procurement specifically for government. We hope that the government will see this as a solution to project abandonment and corruption. Because once the fund has been loaded, the contractor ensure that one hundred percent of his fund is already escrowed. The government cannot take it back and then he cannot take it except when the project is delivered. However, when it comes to procurement, the procurement escrow allows for, uh, milestones. The service-based escrow allows for milestones. So you could break it down so that it's easy for them to source fund to begin. And when the first milestone is done and is verified and uploaded, it is released. Then you go on again to do the second milestone until all the milestones are completed. Also, we have the e-commerce escrow because today, most of the e-commerce companies are losing money as a result of, uh, what do you call pay on delivery. Uh, because most times Nigerians order, uh, goods in anticipation that they are expecting money. And when the- And when the, the logistic, uh, what do you call it, firms deliver and call them on phone, they have no money, they boat away. So the companies are losing money. So it's better they use the, 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 what do you call it, Vet and Pay where they can be sure they are, they have sold. As long as the escrow is done, you have sold, whoever it is, you have sold. So that's how it works. We have the property escrow. We are coming up soon with a trader escrow that will enable a trader in Kanu or the trader in Gagawa or Kebi to just order goods while in the shop and pay the money through escrow. And once the goods come and is verified, then the money is released to the supplier. We also have the latest one, we call the staff payment escrow. So if you abroad, you have staffs, you can load all their monthly salaries on the escrow. At the end of the month, uh, if there are deductions for, um, any staff, any area staff that, uh, salaries need to be deducted or IOU, you add all of them there. At the end of the month, you just add the IOUs, and then you deduct, and then you press release, and their salary goes into the account. Uh, Vet and Pay makes life very, very easy. And then if somebody talked about monitoring, uh, Dr. Fashiba talks about monitoring. We are also soon going to start the service of monitoring buildings for the diaspora. No matter where your buildings are, we have project officers that will do independent monitoring and verification, that, you know, for you to ensure that wha- whatever is happening in your site is up. Meanwhile, you can buy all your materials, blocks, everything through Vet and Pay and through escrow. But we'll keep monitoring it to ensure that the portion of the workman is going on very well. So this is what Vet and Pay represents, and, um, we also have a lot of payment systems. You can pay your bills, electricity recharge, you can buy your airtime, your data is cheaper than the conventional companies here. You can buy your data from there. And there are so many other features that we expect to be added into Vet and Pay. So in a nutshell, what we are addressing, as you can see it in the presentation, we are addressing, uh, what do you call it, fraud in transactions, exploitation in procurement, mediocrity in business, and then of course low financial literacy. And then like the solution like I just mentioned, the nutshell to recap is that Vet and Pay protects end-to-end business transactions fraud-free. It addresses project abandonment. It provides on-spot insurance kind of security to all parties in the transaction. It reduces to the barest minimum logistic cost incurred by e-commerce companies as a result of pay on delivery. It mitigates to the barest minimum losses incurred by Nigerians in diaspora business transactions in Nigeria. And also it expands, uh, what do you call, financial literacy. And the market will cover all transactions in Nigeria, both public and private sector organizations, individual to individual transactions, company to company, transactions, Nigerians in diaspora transactions. And of course, we have a robust customer relationship, uh, that's established, uh, that will help you through onboarding. It's a very simple process. And I know that, uh, Ajim will also lead you into the process shortly. The alternative dispute resolution you mentioned, we have accredited, uh, certified ADR organization that we're working with. And of course, we have the customer relation management always on ground. And then the app channels are distributed from community to community, company to company, ministry, department, and agency of government, social media, vet and precedence challenge, person to person, and referral. So I just want to thank you for listening, and I hope that if you have any questions, we are ready to take on the questions. And I just, uh, urge you to, uh, download the app right now after the meeting. I, I want to thank you very much for this opportunity. Thank you. Hello, moderator?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much again. Um, like I said, you, you've, you, in summary, you took us, uh, by, from the biblical spiritual point of view on the parable of invest, investment and accountability. You also, uh, you know, tried to key into all the, the, the core, the core theme of the past speakers, which is trust. And then you also, you know, expanded it a little bit to say that the, the trust issue is, is a result of poverty, uh, which, uh, is as a result of government incompetence in Nigeria, uh, worsened by insecurity, uh, or insecurity, economic insecurity, so to say. And of course, our ethical values also play a role and the rest of them. And so you believe that Vet and Pay, um, is to condition us, you know, uh, to create trust. And then, uh, you gave the highlights, um, the workings, uh, of the new, uh, EA, EA, E-platform, uh, how that can help to not only mitigate the, the, the problem of trust, but also, uh, you know, to help the diaspora, you know, expand in the business management. So I hope that, um, the individuals, uh, who are on this platform took note, and then probably doing a Q and A, they should be able to, you know, put one or two questions out. I will beg you, um, um, in all Zoom meeting, once it's after two hours, uh, we are no longer listening. And so I will beg you that we try as much as possible to run this section up in the next fifteen minutes, uh, all things being equal. On that, I will pass up the, the microphone, uh, to co-host, uh, Titus, Honorable Titus, uh, to have his, uh, his day and, uh, address the house. Honorable Titus, please have the mic.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Mandy. In fact, you are doing a great work. Thank you for the moderation. And also want to send, uh, my gratitude to all speakers. You really deposited what we in the diaspora want to hear. And, um, I must say a special thank to the disinventor, Dr. Ibe Kalou. Uh, please, your presentation was clearly interested. And I plead that this should not be the last, at least let it be the volume one. We expect to see volume two, volume three, and volume five. We are the whole diaspora. We understand what is going on in this Vet and Pay. Because they say that he that is not informed is deformed. Because at this juncture, I want to carry all diasporas along. Uh, I must say special thanks to all diaspora stakeholders who make out their time to be part of this, uh, important meeting. Uh, notwithstanding, we must say that the second speaker, which is, uh, DG, uh, EK T, Diaspora Relations, they are doing well. I must confirm, EK T is a role model for diaspora in Nigeria for now. I think EK T first, other state copies. And the same vein, uh, Enugu State has picked up because, um, Dr. BK, the chairman of NITCOM, visited Enugu, and they had engagement that all local governments should have diaspora desk officer, which are opportune to be one from my own local government to Jiriva. And this to tell you that the Enugu State governor, his excellency Simba, has mapped out security trust fund, which to sh- ensure that the state is secured. Because without security, there won't be investment. And what I'm urging other diasporans, no matter how much you have, you need to invest home. If it is in low key, it's welcome. In high key, it's welcome. If you cannot invest your state, you can look for other states that is fair time for investment. Like EK T, like Enugu State, like other state like Lagos, you can anchor there. Because one thing is assured, we're whose country enjoying what they struggled, what they worked for, what they planned for. Time shall come when they will tell you and I bye-bye. It may be while we are alive. Or it may be across. They'll be waving us bye-bye. But whatsoever investment we put at home is the greatest legacy we have set to be remembered for. So, he passed me when I see diasporans, some have stayed ten years, five years, twenty years in the diaspora, and nothing to write to him about. When any incidents happen, they come home, you see they don't even have house. They don't have investment to depend on. Or times, if we are with anchor. Please, this think home philosophy, let every diaspora anchor on it. Thank God for this new inv- invasion of Vet and Pay. All of us, we cluster and walk around it. When I was contacted, I told them, we give it a very big boost and make sure it work. But once it work, this distrust or lack of trust that is making diasporans to run away from home, we start, we start coming home to invest. Uh, Mr. Moderator, please continue so we can, uh, run that because we are taking much of our time. I don't want those to bore anybody any longer, so we can run off this session. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Ambassador Titus Aalagua, the Chairman Nigeria in Diaspora, Africa Oji River Diaspora Desk Officer in Enugu State. Um, thank you so much also for all the great job you've been doing in diaspora. Uh, it's not easy, uh, leading Nigeria anywhere in the world. And so, um, anybody who wears the shoe know that it is difficult, uh, you know, dealing with Nigeria. So thank you very much on that. My takeaway is that we should think home philosophy, uh, irrespective of the issues we are having. No trust, no investment. And so you are of the opinion that this is a new initiative we hope to bridge the gap. Because as, uh, all the speaker have already said, uh, the issue of trust is a, is a problem. And hopefully, uh, we are going to, you know, use technology to bridge this, uh, problem of trust. Thank you so much. And so, um, like I, I said before, um, any Zoom meeting after two hours, it's no longer a Zoom meeting because people are no longer concentrating. And so I'm going to call the next, uh, two speakers, and I will beg them to use just five minutes each, uh, to make their presentation so that we can hopefully round up here, you know, in the next, uh, fifteen minutes. Uh, and then, uh, after that, we will call the, uh, the, um, the, the convener to give us a, a very, very, very brief closing remark, or to assign somebody to give us a closing remark. So I will call first, Aghim Ikwen, then Kaya. Please, I pardon me if I don't pronounce your name very well. Uh, in this order, please, you have five minutes each to make your comments. First, Aghim, you have the microphone. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, uh, uh, Kenneth. Um, you've been a wonderful moderator, and I want to appreciate very much, uh, other people who have presented. The basic problem here is trust. And, uh, I want to take a look at, um, this issue from the view of the application. So permit me to share my screen. I have just a few slides, um, for us to look at. Um, you can see my screen, right?
Yes, yes, sir. But no, no graphic yet.
Fantastic. So, um, first, the application itself. We already know what it is. So let me not waste, uh, your time. Uh, one second, I'm trying to get to be able to move to the next slide. Just a second, please. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, because I seem to have been, my system seems to have frozen. Maybe because of the sharing of, um, of the document. Just a second, let me see what I can do. Okay, since you can still hear me, I'll just proceed.
Okay, sir.
Uh, seems to have caught up already. I'm just going to proceed. I'll be, I'm finding it difficult to take the presentation from here, so I'll just go ahead and speak. And I'll share the presentation. Now, the application-
We can see you now. We can see the presentation.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, so we have, um, just a few points. You have a view of the features, where we have this application, and how we get it started, and a conclusion. Very short presentation. The key features, the first one I want to take a look at is, you know, secure transactions, you know, um, the funds are held in escrow until both parties meet their agreed conditions, ensuring protection against fraud. I also want to mention here that this application is done using advanced encryption technologies. Because while you transact, you must feel safe. And, um, people must not be able to hijack, you know, your transactions, uh, and steal your money. We have close to one hundred percent, um, possibilities of, um, if I, we have about a hundred percent possibility of security on each transaction. So, uh, we are implementing two hundred and fifty-six, you know, uh, bits, uh, encryption on this app. This way, it is practically impossible for anybody to steal, you know, your, um, transactions. And then the processes are transparent. So both parties at any point in time can track the status of the transactions in real time. Of course, that promotes, you know, trust and clarity. So the terms and conditions are clear, and is set before the funds are deposited. You know, that reduces, you know, misunderstandings. And we have a user-friendly interface. So when you look at Vet and Pay, it, it, it looks pretty good, pretty nice to look at, uh, starting from the landing page. So it is designed so that people can use it easily. And of course, businesses, governments, people can navigate the platforms, you know, effortlessly and carry over whatever transactions that, um, you need to carry out. We have a very intuitive design. The user experience is very smooth. When you keep, when you click to carry out new transactions, you know, they don't freeze. It goes very smoothly. So, um, uh, that way, uh, you find it pretty much easy, you know, to do whatever it is that you need to do on the application. And then we have real-time tracking. You know, the users receive instant updates on transaction status, and that enhances communication and reduces uncertainty. You know, when we have all these features, um, even when people, uh, when Dr. Karen said, Vet and Pay has set up a system that is addressing all the trust issues in, uh, you know, in financial transactions. People also are worried, if I use this application, am I safe using it? Of course you are. This application is on App Store. It, it means that it has gone through, you know, rigorous, uh, testing before we can put it there. Um, we have a very dedicated customer support team. The support team is very proactive. And, um, they are proactive in such a way that they can assist you from the beginning. In fact, from the point of downloading the application to the point of, you know, experiencing your first transactions on the applications. They are very friendly, and they are very patient, you know, um, well-trained, and of course, um, for any single step you need to carry out, if you have any issues with it, they are, they will swing into action right immediately. And of course, the customers, the customer care, uh, is, uh, operates twenty-four hours, never skips, never skips at all. So you have a lot of comfort in using this, uh, uh, application. Now, why do we have, why is it that it is, you know, Vet and Pay? Vet and Pay does any transactions from any industry, be it e-commerce, you know, if it is a freelance service provider, if it is a real estate service, uh, automobile purchase service, whatever transaction it is, procurement from government, government to government, government to individuals, business to business, and so on. Vet and Pay, you know, works for any type of transactions. And of course, another reason for Vet and Pay, it is that the, the, you know, the application is cloud-based, and it is very secure. Of course, being cloud-based, we have implemented disaster recovery. We have implemented a business assurance such that even if the location of the servers where Vet and Pay is running from is bombed, if there is natural disaster, whatever it is that happens to it, within minutes, the business recovers and you continue to do your transactions, you know, as if nothing happened at all. And of course, um, the plan is to have ninety-nine point nine percent uptime all year round. Uh, we would, we would have said one hundred percent uptime, but you know, there is no technology in the world Uh we would, we would have said one hundred percent uptime, but you know, there is no technology in the world that um we, you you know, by way of uh products, you you drop that zero point one percent and you call it ninety-nine point nine percent. We have seen systems, we have built systems that have worked without a single minute of downtime ever since, you know, they have been built. So this is very achievable, this is the direction, you know, of flow. And of course, with all this, you expect that when you use Vet and Pay, the service is very efficient. So the coding we have used, the application, um the abstraction layers and everything we have done on this application technically gives it, you know, very, very good quality. I would in fact say fantastic quality. It's a world-class uh application. And I can assure you that using it from the diaspora, you will see, you will have the feeling of as if this application is made, you know, in whichever countries that uh you reside. And then now, a very quick look at, how do you start on this application? Step number one, downloading, visit vetandpay dot N G to see, get instructions on, you know, the download. You create an account and of course, when you create an account, you you put in your K Y C uh documents, you know, your identities. So that we know exactly who you are. Without knowing who you are, it is not going to be possible to do any transactions on Vet and Pay. So after creating an account, the next thing is you initiate transactions, you deposit your funds, fulfill obligations of whatever transactions they are. If you are the buyer, if you are the seller, ob- obligations are fulfilled. And then, of course, the final point is that the funds are released. You know, these um steps I'm taking here, I'm giving you here, uh uh are compressed. We can explain them, you know, in tighter details and give several examples. However, you know, for for the want of time, um I I want to keep it this short. Bearing that we're going to have other sessions and we're going to have to leave channels, you know, which people can interact to ask further questions on uh on this. So um where do we go to? The conclusion is that Vet and Pay offers a reliable and secure platform for conducting transactions, fostering trust and transparency between parties. Whether you are an individual, business or government entity, Vet and Pay provides the tools necessary to ensure your transactions are safe and efficient. And of course, thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very, very much for that wonderful uh um slide. And uh again, focusing on trust, uh you looked at the security of transaction, which is very, very important. Uh you also look at the transparency of the system, another important one. Uh you look at the, you know, user-friendly uh of the app, which is quite important. Uh you look at the customer service and the team support basis. Most importantly, it's two four, it's twenty-four hours, which means anybody can access it anywhere from the world. And of course, you took us through getting started. So I am basically in, you know, excited already. Uh and I'm going to do my first download after this and try it out. Probably with uh buying, even if it's uh three, four, five bags of cement in the other state, so that I can be able to say for sure that yet we have a platform that works for Diaspora. Thank you for for that insightful presentation. And so I will go as already, you know, uh 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 advise that we're going to have um Kye uh to please, please, please use five minutes to address us. And we're going to have a very, very senior diaspora citizen, a veteran, uh Mister Bimbo, to give us a three-minute remark. And I saw some hands already up, including Pastor Beams I've seen on the, on the, on the screen, I've noted it down. And then we'll see exactly how time can allow us, but like I said, by ten after, fifteen after, we should be closing down. Please allow me and I will stick to part of diaspora professionalism. So please, Kye, you have the floor, five minutes, please.
How are you doing? How are you doing, sir? Please, can you hear me loud and clear?
Very, very well, loud and clear.
All right. Thank you, Honorable. I appreciate it. Sir Kenneth, you've been spot on. Um it's been exquisite. Thank you. Um Honorable Ken, it's good to see you and my good sir. I'm inspired. I'm a believer. So my name is Kyo Dneha and um so it's Ade Kye because for Redhead Kye, they think I'm in Nigerian boy drum for.
In fact, I was thinking of Ghana.
That's what makes that one. I mean, I just, not Ghanaian, Nigerian.
Our brothers from the-
I am, I am a home soil, please. Okay, so my, everything that I've touched, I've heard today has been amazing and spot on. But the space in which I exist in is within the communication space. And um I've been doing that for almost twenty years and recently a lot more of my clients have been in the Middle East. And now I'm thinking of turn the camera towards our community at home. Now, the issue of trust, I think like a lot of things, even if we look at our faiths, which tend to our faith as in either Islam, Christianity or whatever faith we practice. All of this leads to one very key thing. What are the seeds we are planting to inspire people to trigger trust? The element of trust does not start in one day. The element of trust is a seed that's been planted that becomes a culture, a structure, an infrastructure, and then we build into it. Now, through a lot of the points that have been touched on, of course, this app that's been put into place is first and foremost a game changer. Because with the notes I made from it, it literally becomes a smart project manager. It becomes that perfect bridge between Nigerian diaspora, uh Nigerians at home and Nigerians in diaspora. It becomes a government between the government and other projects and also becomes a safe space for foreigners that actually want to invest, do business with Nigeria. So it becomes our landing point for connecting. That's why that, why that's important. Now, when it comes to Nigerians, let's first make this very clear. Corruption and anything we've talked about is a worldwide phenomenon, not just in Nigeria. And I think the big problem we have is that too many of us as Nigerians, we promote too much of the negative and never invest in the positive. We promote so much of how bad things are that the good things that happen almost never exist because it's been overshadowed. Now, my take on building trust in Nigeria starts by a structure in which we start to aim it at people. In the West, Japan, I think if people have seen a lot of videos, people say things like Japan is the cleanest place in the, in the world. When Japanese people go somewhere, they keep the place clean. Um they say the Swedes, everyone has their own different things. Now, if you want to inspire people, it's important we start to sell a vision on what actually it is to be a Nigerian. In America, one of the biggest, sorry for saying this, one of the biggest cons that we all live in is something called the American dream. And to people who genuinely, genuinely understand the way the American system works, it is a con. But it is something that makes people get out of bed and aspire to be it. If we want to create trust within a system in Nigeria, we need to start to sell what it is to be a Nigerian. We need to start to sell a fantasy. My generation and the generation of a lot of people on this call, we had, we had visions of Nigerians like the, the Zikwe, the um Awolwa and to name the few, where people who are freedom fighters that inspired us. Now, what does the younger generation have to inspire them? They have more things of social media saying things are negative than things that are positive. What's my solution and what's my answer with my last two minutes is this. I think the first thing, first and foremost to build trust is that we need to rebrand the image of Nigeria globally. We need to put in place our ambassadors who represent us worldwide to actually start to promote that image vividly across everybody. Second thing, to start to build trust, we have a lot of diasporas that have left are all members of an alumni. Through these alumnis, they can start to support and build in-house infrastructure so we're not hopefully dependent on the government, but yet we're building the trust within each other because we have a social network that helps that be built. The third thing, our youths, we have NYSC, which is almost won a great year of transition from being a youth to an adult. What is it that we're sending or what are we sending being a patriot to them? My take, my goal is I echo what everybody has touched on. My actions is we actually need to design what it is to be a Nigerian. Package it as a product from the way we speak to the way we get people to connect with us and start to sell that imagery. I'll leave with this one point thinking about it is this. I did a talk with a certain group in the Middle East and they were talking on how marriages are failing across the globe. And it's a really, really bad phenomenon. And I asked everyone in the room a very simple question, which is this. How many, when it comes to TV, music or entertainment, how many things aim at promoting marriages? Do you know the honest answer? Less than three percent. There are more things on TV telling us about our affairs. There are more things TV tells us about lack of trust. So if there's more things promoting negative, how do you then want to sell positive? To inspire a people, it is not of words of authority. It's about planting seeds into our lifestyles to help us connect with it. People don't, people don't do what you tell them. People connect with something that is bigger than them. And in my own words, in my summary, I had a whole presentation, but my quick five minutes, sorry, I've got over by uh five seconds. My big summary to it is this. If we want to build trust with, an app like this is a firm foundation. We need to sell Nigeria, we need to rebrand. Companies do it. Rebrand what Nigeria is. Let Nigerian citizens understand what they're proud about, not the arrogance of the former giants of Africa, but believe in something bigger than us. And the moment you have something you have faith in, it gives you power to want to do it for you, not just for everybody. I could go on and trust me, I have prepared for almost twenty-five minutes, but that's a summary. You want to change, you want to create trust, sell to the minds of the people. It would let, if you can dream, poverty doesn't hurt you because you see something bigger. My name is Kyo Dneha. That's my quick summary, my good sir. And um in the future, I look forward to being something a bit more structured. Um but that's, that is the opportunity I get to do with a lot of great companies. And um when I say companies from Google to Burberry, they understand that that's the changes we're seeing. It's time as a country and as a people, we resell our brand and start to believe in this dream again of what it is to be a Nigerian, not just talk about it. Thank you, sir.
Kye Oduyemi, you've uh just demonstrated that you are from the communication world. In fact, in only three hours, we got everything you've just uh. The Nigeria we want, that's your main message. We need to rebrand our mind and our thoughts. And we need to communicate that, not only believe it, not only live in it, but also communicate it. And then you believe that um we need to create a safe space where we need to do that. Thank you so much. I think the Vet and Pay will no doubt have to get you in their service to make sure that the diaspora and the world get to know what they actually are selling to us. Uh thank you for that eloquent presentation, even with-
Thank you, my good sir.
And so uh like I said before, uh we have a very old veteran in the house, somebody I've admired for a very long time. And somebody I've learned so much of his activities in the diaspora space. And then somebody who has not, you know, hold back by, you know, giving to the diaspora whenever they call him to do so. Uh so I will beg you, uh uh veteran, diaspora veteran Bimbo, that you have please three minutes uh to give us what you have and then probably uh one of the, you know, uh takeaways we are going to be taking away from this uh uh interesting section. Sir Bimbo, you have the microphone. Do we have uh Mister Bimbo in the house? Okay, uh I'm not quite sure he's in the house. So, so I will go straight and then ask, I saw the hand of uh Pastor Beams. I don't know if um you want to ask a question? If yes, please make it a very quick one or a very quick intervention. Then I will call on the Dr. Kenneth or anybody he's going to nominate uh to please give us a vote of thanks and a closing remark. All right, I can see that um Pastor Beams, the hand probably was raised uh uh by arrow. So uh Dr. Ken, please, you can nominate anybody you want to give us a, you know, a closing remark stroke uh, you know, vote of thanks so that we can end this section in the next one, two minutes. Over to you, Dr. Ken.
Hello.
Hello, doctor.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh I nominate Annie Ibikalo to do the, the closing remarks. Thank you.
All right. Uh Annie Ibikano, you have the microphone, sir. Please unmute yourself if you're here and uh you have the microphone. Annie Ibikalo. Dr. Ken, are you sure Annie Ibikalo is here?
Yeah, she's there. I don't know, maybe she's having issue with uh Mike, I don't know. But uh if she's not ready, uh let um Kings uh Emafiadon Sagi, let him do the vote of thanks.
All right.
Sorry, I still have my question.
Well, I actually have been calling you with Pastor Beams before now. Um, okay, you have a quick, quick question, please. Hello. The mod, the super moderator, uh the super admin, please. It's like uh everybody's uh is muted. Pastor Beams' house is still up.
Okay, uh thank you so much. Apologies, I think I go uh side um track when you called me. Apologies for that. I've listened very attentively. I think tonight has been very insightful. Um but everything boils around trust and how do we build trust relationship uh within our community um in, in terms of how we relate with uh Nigeria, in our nation Nigeria, for us to be, to have confidence uh to carry out transactions um in the nation. And I've seen the presentation relating to the hub, uh which is quite a very loadable uh project. Uh the first question for me really around the developer is number one. Um what are the, what are other or existing products like these around the world that we can refer to for comparative um analyses? As in, do we think there are existing platforms around the world where this type of things are being used uh to carry out transaction? And again, so my second part of the question is, uh who, who is the trustees managing the trust? When I said that, the trust relationship between the hub users and the hub developer. Basically, who are the, who is responsible for regulating the hub itself in its usage? I'll give an example. Uh paper is worldwide known. And if I initiate a, a transaction to buy an item from a buyer, um that item, the buyer will not release my fund, uh will not receive my fund until there's a proof of receipt from me that I've actually received my goods. Uh as a matter of fact, I could dispute the goods on receipt as well. That actually this good is not for the standard I wanted it and that dispute could allow me to recover my money back uh from paper. Do we have this level of assurance within this application uh to use? And also the last part I will say, uh again, it's all around usage, is um yeah, as a middle person. Uh so if one party tries to use the hub, uh it's important that the other party also engages with the hub. So how do we create that awareness to make sure that this become an household product that everybody for transactional purposes, maybe governing, recognized? Um as I speak to you, I'm currently talking to you from Dubai and I've seen a lot of things here and I'm, wow. This country is really moving very fast, that transaction can take place within the finger of your teeth. Goods will be delivered to your door without even knowing who you are dealing with. Um is this the, is this where we want to be? How do we raise awareness so that this becomes something that the nation actually entrenches into its processes? Um so we can really move forward as a nation. Because this is a major breakthrough for us if we can embrace it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, uh Pastor Beams. Uh I think uh Ken, uh Dr. Ken, you, you had a question. So I think either you or Aghim Ikewe, who did a, a slide, a technical presentation, might probably be in the best position to answer that. And so please, if they can take the answer and immediately after the answer, please, the nominated person, Annie Ibikalo, can please uh proceed to, uh to um vote of thanks and then, and then, you know, any remarks so that we don't uh stress, stress this beyond the next five minutes. Dr. Ken, over to you.
Uh okay, let me take this um with, thank you, Pastor Beams. Your questions, your concerns, your observations are really, you know, fantastic. First, um we have an application called escrow dot com. Escrow dot com is a US-based- Escrow dot com is a US-based uh uh, you know, application. That we found out that is doing something that is similar. However, what we're doing is, is basically novel because we have innovated some new areas. That areas where, which people, you know, never thought about. One example is um when it comes to, you know, government applications, I mean government projects. You know, uh government engages people to carry out projects. And a lot of times those projects are abandoned. You see projects that stretch, you know, through years, you know, and. That money doesn't belong to government, it belongs to every one of us, belongs to every Nigerian. So we are providing this application for that solution. And, you know, government offices are being to look in the direction of this uh, of this application to solve. Those problems of abandoned uh uh projects, because if you don't do it, you know, the money gets back to them, you know. So that is one um example and that's how we do it. And of course, uh you speak about uh uh regulation. Let me take it from these two angles. First, there is what we call the Startup Act. The Startup Act provides for innovative ideas in Nigeria that don't have regulation yet. You know, to operate within the shores of Nigeria. And that is the reason that we are starting Vet and Pay, you know, from Nigeria. And secondly, um the funds that are deposited are not held by Vet and Pay. They are held by Provenance Bank. That means they are insured by N D I C. Secondly, Vet and Pay has engaged with Leadway Assurance, you know, as a second layer of insurance for. Uh every transaction that happens, you know, within the ecosystem. So we have.
All right, all right, again, what is, what's the N D I C?
Sorry, uh the National Deposit Insurance Corporation. Those are the people that, that they provide insurance for deposit forms, you know.
Okay, okay. Sorry, so I wanted just for our viewers because they might not know.
Yeah, thanks about that. So um I like the experience, you know, you have in Dubai. I've had such experiences in different parts of the world too. And we very, very much love to bring that level of trust, you know, to Nigeria. And that's why this tool, you know, was developed. And of course, I would tell you that the kind of observations you have made imply that. You can become part of this, you are going to become part of this ecosystem. We need you, you know, your experiences. We need to share ideas with us because this idea is not a one man's uh uh matter. You know, I hope I'm on the right track with Dr. Ken.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we need every single person, you know, to be part of this. And that's why we're pushing it out. And my belief is that not long from now. Vet and Pay is going to become, you know, a household application in Nigeria because it is solving the problem of trust. Point blank, you know, no issues at all. I hope I've been able to respond properly to you, Dr. Bean, um Pastor Beams.
All right, let, let me quickly add in a minute. That uh Dr. Pastor Beams, um you have. Uh an option to raise disputes when the goose arrive and it's not in line with what was ordered. You can raise a dispute and the money will not be paid to him. Until you resolve the dispute, if you can't resolve it, like I said earlier, we have um. Alternative dispute resolution uh uh partners that we can refer you, uh so that is already there. And also in case you are the supplier and you are wondering what if the man refused to release my money. In the terms of, uh uh uh, in the terms of the conditions. Stays that if you don't release the money for fifteen days, we pay the supplier or the contractor, the seller. Because you have no reason not to pay when there are no disputes. Thank you very much. And. Finally, I think we're also coming up with e-commerce where you can see verified vendors a- across the whole country. We verify them, know their, their, where they are. And then you can see the picture, you can interact with them and they open your escrow. You don't need to, if you look for somebody around you, you can get them. Just in your phone. Thank you very much.
All right, Ken, please straight to. Um vote of thanks and then um so we can close the section.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Annie Ibikalo. Please, you have the microphone.
Okay, I'm just excited to all the speakers. Thank you all for taking time to join this meeting today. Um I appreciate your insight, your contribution and your engagement. Uh I look forward to the next meeting, I believe. Speaking on this trust has gone a long way for us to work out, to see how we can. Um make trust take root in Nigeria. So I just want to say thank you to all the speakers. And to every one of us that have joined the. Pan Hub meeting today. Thank you very much. God bless you all once again.
Thank you, madam. Color for keeping this very short, we need it. And so on behalf of the, of the organizers, I say thank you for everybody and for coming out and joining us and wishing you all a very happy weekend. Bye bye.